That's okay, we could, you know, could do that at the end of the work session.
I took a practice round, so I think I might be able to do this quite well. Okay, ready? In order, in order to comply with section 2.2, 3712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on June 24, 2019, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, and/or discussed or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Schultz, seconded by Mr. Moon, all those in favor. And that motion is unanimous with Ms. Keys-Gamar away from the table. So we will now convene, reconvene our discussion of the Student Rights and Responsibilities, Regulation 2601, Student Rights and Responsibilities. Mr. Moon is the meeting manager.
Okay, thank you, thank you. With that, we do not have to go back to that closed meeting, which is on our agenda for seven o'clock anymore. That's the good news, and now I have Ms. Hines.
Thank you. So, trying to be quick, I have two questions. One having to do with what we have on Slide 10, and that is basically giving students the option of staying in OSS and getting their assignments, right? So it's that right there. As an alternative, the student may continue to receive out-of-school support and assistance with completion of assignments. So my question about that, and if you don't mind, I'll give you my questions and then just let you answer both of them. My question about that is just, you know, what are we asking schools to do here? And are we supporting, how are we supporting the schools and the teachers and the admin in providing that support for the students? So that's my first question. Second is, when we talk about possession and use on school grounds of that list of drugs, this is, it's new now that we are saying that will lead to two days of in-school suspension plus other things, and I think it's on Slide 13 and 14 that we describe what that is. Make sure I'm right about that. No, the second chance. Fourteen, right? Okay. All right. So my question about that is, you know, we have dual responsibilities here, right? We have responsibility to the kids who get caught up, that we're doing right by them. But we also have a responsibility to everybody else in the building, the teachers, the other students, the parents of the other students. And so if we're going to make this change, I think we need to honestly talk about what message we're sending to everybody, and how do we, how, how do we answer the concern that some people may have that this is a slap on the wrist for someone who has chosen to possess and use drugs in school? Do we have some way of measuring that it's working? Do we have a recidivism measure? Is there some other data that we can come back to the community with and say, well, we've taken this risk with these kids, but here's the benefit of it? So that's my question. How are we going to measure whether it's, it's working? Because I do think we have a responsibility to everybody else in the building and everybody in the community to show that, you know, we're, we're also being responsible to have safe and sober environments where everyone can be focused on learning, so.
So I can answer the first part of your question in terms of what supports are given to the kids. So the system of support advisors are typically the first line for, if it's a high school-age kid. And so that person is working with the student's teachers, has access to the student's Blackboard account, and is making sure that the student has the information that's in the student's Blackboard account because, and we, we've had to work out so that the Blackboard account stays live after the day fifteen, when the student hits, you know, they can't be enrolled anymore because they've missed fifteen consecutive days. So the system of support advisor in most cases, in some cases, we have people who work for the non-traditional schools who are stipend to work after hours with the kids. It's usually virtual. Sometimes the kids come in with principal permission to take a test after school. Sometimes we meet them at other places, libraries, et cetera. So the demand on the teacher is primarily, you know, in other words, we're using Blackboard so the teacher's not making assignments for this particular child, and we're arranging for test-taking and those kinds of things as we go along. The reason we added this particular language was that we had the feeling that it read, and initially, it, it sort of meant like if you didn't follow this direction, like you should go to your new location, that you were like in violation of attendance, basically. So we wanted to say alternatively, you could, you could continue to receive the support that we had started as soon as the process started.
Okay, and then quick, quick follow-up on that. Do we have any sense of what the numbers would be and how much of, how much extra work that would provide for schools? I don't know.
I can get you a report. We do each year do an annual report of how many kids we have supported through out-of-school support and for how long. And so, yes, I have that available, I just don't know it off the top of my head.
So to answer your second question, currently, we do track the recidivism rates for students that attend the AOD seminar. That is information that we could use. Again, we're looking to do a more school-based model because some of our concerns would be that students have not chosen to go to the AOD seminar, and we would like this to not be an option. So we would be tracking the recidivism rate as well as the number of students. And, and, you know, you could ask the principals their perspective on the numbers that we're looking at, as far as how many students they may have taken up for first-time possession of marijuana. But our, our biggest concern would be tracking the number of students, the recidivism rate, and we may need to look at in our system how we're tracking that.
Thank you. I think the school board would be interested in getting that data. And then is there anything the principals would like to add about that question of, you know, how, how, I don't know, that problem some people will have, is sort of like, but we're not taking, maybe we're not taking this seriously enough? Do you hear that? Do you feel it? Are you worried about it?
I'll add two pieces to that. One is for the, when a student's out of school and out-of-school suspension, it does mean for the teachers though, even though they're a lot of times communicating through Blackboard, oftentimes they are creating, you know, the assignment and the lesson plans, what's happening in the classroom, and then something along the same lines for each of those individual students. So that does mean added work on the teachers that way. I think in any of the cases, we do have, you know, when the, depending on what the concern is and the impact on the educational environment, we do have the other parents who are concerned about, what are we doing to make sure we have a safe and secure environment in our schools around that?
Dr. Haby, did you want to?
Yeah, I, I was going to make the point that Mr., that Mr. Hood made about the fact that even though the lessons are on Blackboard, you know, the teachers do often have to adapt those for out-of-school suspension for individual student. And then the other point that I think we have to consider, the, the model, the example that we gave us for high school, and so if it's a middle school student, then it would look different in that we don't have the SOSAs, and so typically, the counseling staff would take on the responsibility of collecting the assignments from the teachers, and the teachers would have to adapt the assignments appropriately. And I, I guess very rarely, there could be elementary, and that would be a different, similar to high school, but that's not very often.
At, at the middle school is typically where we have the non-traditional school teachers step in and take a role in gathering information from the teachers and in getting it to the student. So it's not typically physical, like papers, but the teachers are sending things to that person, and that person is working with the kid.
Okay, I have Chairman Corbin Sanders to be followed by Ms. Partridge, Ms. Schurz, and Mrs. McLaughlin. Corbin Sanders.
Great, thank you. A couple of things. Thanks for incorporating so much of what we talked about last week, and that's really, you know, we're trying to perfect this document. So along those lines, I would suggest that on, in the introduction, I had mentioned before that I thought it was important to address the special ed concerns, and the feedback was, well, no, we don't discriminate against anybody, and we want this to apply to, you know, for everybody to feel like this is a welcoming document. So along those lines, I would suggest that on page 11, the language on the right to equal opportunity be moved straight up to the front in the introduction, because that sets the tone for the whole document. Additionally, on page 11, there is a statement on the complaint to regional, to the Regional Assistant Superintendent, and the last sentence on that says that the decision of the Regional Assistant Superintendent shall be final. I don't believe that is consistent. I believe that people always have the right to appeal to the school board and to the Division Superintendent, so I think that line should be struck. Additionally, the next page, on page 12, we talk about continuing, okay, I'm sorry, yeah, but I'm concerned about the time. You guys can catch up. Move K to the front.
And the Regional Superintendent, what is, where was that?
Okay, move K to the introduction, and then, which is on page 11. Also on page 11, you have a reference that says in a complaint to the Regional Assistant Superintendent, the decision of the Regional Assistant Superintendent shall be final. I don't believe that reflects our policy. There's always a right to appeal.
I believe this is speaking more broadly, not necessarily to the referrals that go to the Division Superintendent. I believe these are the suspensions or complaints that go on to the Region Assistant Superintendent. Typically, they do currently stop at that level. Not to say that there aren't individual parents that choose to go beyond the Region Assistant Superintendent, so that's certainly a recommendation. If the Board would like us to go in that direction, we could do that.
Okay, if, perhaps we can put that as a next step, and we can agree to it or not disagree with it later. You can go on. The next page, on page 12, there's a reference continuing about Title IX, and I would suggest that we have to reference the Ombudsman, both the Special Ed and the Standard Ombudsman. And then, I've got more comments, but one that is of particular concern to me is the language at the back of the SRNR where we talk about acceptable use, and there's been some significant changes in the acceptable use policy, or in the language. I would suggest we need to reference acceptable use in the actual SRNR, and that a student's rights to bring in their information technology, but then there, you know, how does that get measured by how that technology will be used? So I would suggest that we need to bring that in, and that's the reference to Regulation 6410 dot 16, and there may be a need to modify 6410 dot 16 because there's language in there which calls for the schools to review the policy with students and enforce rules of conduct, but we don't actually give a timeframe for that, and that, that policy should be reviewed at the same time as the SRNR because it is the rights and responsibilities.
I missed the one about Title IX. So you're on page 12, number two?
Page 12, there was a, if you look at the language on page 12, you talk about complaints and everything, but they don't suggest, they don't reference the Ombudsman. And if we really are trying to reinforce the role of the Ombudsman, we should be consistent about that, that if you have questions, it's not only going to the Title IX Coordinator, but a parent may choose to go to the Ombudsman first. Do I understand that to be correct, Dr. Duran?
Well, the Ombud, the Ombudsman would be somewhere a parent could go if they had questions about how the Title IX process would work, and so then ultimately, though they do have to go to Title IX Coordinator to make the complaint, they don't make the complaint to the Ombudsman.
I understand that.
But we certainly can add in a sentence or two about, if you have questions about this, here's who you should contact that can help you with the Title IX concern.
Correct.
So, and that'll be similar language to what you see on the previous part where we included on page 11 on the top. So the top of page 11, the right to complain, we can use that kind of language and frame it on this page around Title IX concerns.
Excellent.
Because that is what the Ombudsman currently does, is help parents through that process and speak to what the next steps are.
That's why I want to make sure they know where to find it.
Understood.
And then, do you want to make a comment or respond to the language about modification, including references to Regulation 6410, and then a slight modification as to that should be done at the same time as the SRNR?
We can certainly look at an appropriate place to put the reference to the acceptable use in SRNR, and I'll refer to Mary Beth Lefglas about the regulation.
One last, we talk about the SROs on page 37, and it might be helpful to have a footnote about the SRO MOU. And then on page 58, there's a reference to substantial disruption, the definition, and it may, we may want to introduce the language negatively impact students, because it includes any event that impacts students. That's all encompassing, as written.
Okay, so we can certainly add that on page 58 to make that around the negative impact.
Any, okay, I have done. Okay, thank you. All right, I have Ms. Partridge to be followed by Ms. Schurz.
Yeah, mine are just really brief. First of all, I'm happy to see our movement toward the, the second chance, and happy for that balance there. I appreciate, I can't remember if it was with you, Mr. Hood, but the graduation versus graduation ceremony, I had that with one of my principals. So I'm glad that we're clarifying that it's the ceremony versus graduation. There was a lot of confusion with one of my student cases. If we could be consistent, I think in some areas, it says graduation, and in some areas, it says graduation ceremony, and it just caused a lot of unnecessary confusion with one student at least a year ago. So if we could be consistent, I think that's the only request I have. I can give you the page numbers, but it's easy to just, okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have Ms. Schurz to be followed by Mrs. McLaughlin.
So on a couple of things, it's tough the way we're doing this because it's so late, not of your fault. So on the bottom of page of Slide 6, so you have a change that you removed absenteeism as a discipline violation, and they said adjusted the consequences for first-time tobacco and vaping to two-day in-school suspension interventions. Are we, because in our last report, vaping was, was not shown as a discipline statistic, I don't know, so there's vaping and there's vaping. So there's vaping of a nicotine-based infusion oil, there's another of a THC. So do you mean obviously a nicotine-based vaping incident? Yes. Are we doing something to call it that? Yes. I mean, I know that's a garbled mouthful. Yes, so in the SRNR, it explicitly says vaping of nicotine, vaping of things that are, like, you can vape like, I don't know, strawberry oil. I understand, but this one in particular is not referring to a THC-based. No. THC-based goes under the marijuana category. Okay, all right. Well, that's just, I want to have that clarification. Then on, a little bit along with Ms. Polczek at the bottom, in Slide 7, I actually would ask that that actually be expanded, not limited to something called a graduation ceremony or convocation, rather graduation-related activities, because you could have a senior night, a baccalaureate, graduation itself, all-night grad party. And so, you know, I've seen instances where they took away everything except graduation itself, which was very sort of indiscriminate in its application. I didn't see a basis for that. So what, what's the thought of principals on that?
I guess for me, it depends on what, what the infraction was. We talked about, there's a difference between, say vandalism and bringing a weapon to school the last 10 days of school as a senior. So we, we came up with a list of things that we would consider to be showstoppers for the graduation ceremony that we'd be happy to talk about, but.
Yeah, like assaulting a teacher, you know, yeah, all those, the things, yeah.
On Slide 8.
So we're talking about, because there it says graduation ceremony itself is allowing the student to participate in the actual graduation. Obviously, that's a huge event because of family and parents, and, you know, it's something we think all feel strongly about, that we want every student to have the opportunity to participate in that, with the exception of some of the things out there that are otherwise. So I think in the previous policy, the students were excluded from, from that opportunity, whereas we're saying we would like them to be included into it. And if we're separating out them, what about those other activities? And what would that, you know, should the students be allowed to participate in those? I think again, I would look at that and say, depending on what those events are and the impact it's had on the school, it would, to me, it would be hard to say upfront to say the student should be able to participate in everything that's part of the graduation activities, depending on what actually happened and the impact it had on others in the building.
But that, that takes everything, so this, while I appreciate this, and I actually agree actually with what's on the screen, the problem is it takes out of the purview of the Board in driving policy, everything other than graduation ceremony. So that's basically, you know, relegated only the graduation ceremony to our, our influence in the policy change. So I'm, I'm not thrilled with that. I actually do think it's problematic in that those are the culminating events of a student's educational career with us, so I don't know what anybody else thinks about that. I'd like to hear about it. But going on to Slide 9, please. Obviously, this is something I've been looking for, for a long time, was to drop down the age, which we're not going to ask a student. I would actually like to see not write or sign a statement. I don't want a statement produced for them that they just sign because of their age. I'm assuming that that's the intent. I'm just wondering, because I had long advocated 10, was there a thought behind dropping it to eight, which is better? I mean, I'm, I'm taking the bonus. So the reason we went down to eight was because in other places in the policy, we say something about K3, and the state was looking at K3 as being sort of a category unto itself in terms of, you know, wanting to restrict some of the things, so eight years old seemed to make sense. Okay, and then on page, I'm going to have to have a go back for my technology question, but on Slide 17, 14, the second bullet says students attend AOD intervention with follow services?
I apologize, that's supposed to be follow-up.
So what are those follow-up services? So when they have the AOD intervention, there is a screener that they do. The screener helps indicate whether, sort of what level of drug involvement they have. If there is drug involvement that is at a serious, you know, frequent, significant level, that would be a referral to the Community Services Board, et cetera. If it was at a lower level, we are going to institute a, a group at the school. It's like an eight-week group, it's a scripted thing. But are those, is that follow-on services or follow-up services? Is that illustrated anywhere? I mean, it's sort of a nebulous. It says it in, it says it in the SRNR. Okay. All right, well, I have time for my last question, at least at this point, which is Slide 10. This may not have been something anybody was particularly looking at. It's been a concern of mine, and actually occurs, it references what I believe is the top of page two of Attachment A of Regulation 6410, which is an attachment in our board docs. I really haven't had a chance to digest these. If you could tell me a little bit about how, and it may be Mary Beth, how these were brought up, and for my colleagues, I had asked the question in our Students' Rights and Responsibilities, we said nothing about the rights of students with technology. We only talked about the responsibility side, and so this was an attempt by staff to enumerate, to some extent, the other R of the SRNR, which is their rights. I don't know if you're able to bring up the top of page two of Attachment A on the screen for us, but if staff could comment on why these and whether or not they're comprehensive, and I'm, I'm not sure yet that they are, but it's a start.
Yeah, actually, we were actually very pleased with your suggestion, quite frankly. So we feel like it was a really good idea to add some rights into this document to make it more compatible with SRNR, so thank you for that suggestion. So we work with our, our counterparts in instructional services, and we actually looked at some of the, what some other divisions are doing in this area, and so this looked like, in terms of wanting to make sure that in the virtual environment, they had similar rights as they do in the physical environment. So in terms of the rights to be treated with respect, and the rights to be, feel like they are able to express their beliefs and those kind of things. A lot of these were really in terms of verifying that they have the right to expect the same kind of environment, positive environment, online that they have in the classroom, in the physical classroom. So that's really what the, what the concepts were here.
But fundamentally, I agree with all of that, and I appreciate the effort of staff to add this. I will just say, the thing that I was hoping to see was the right to due process in an IT investigation of their, of their online presence and where that occurs, and I don't think we've quite got that yet.
Well, and part of the second bullet, students have, may talk to the teacher or principal if they feel that a school decision is not fair. That was part of how we were hoping to get that, in terms of if they feel like they've been, you know, accused of something, or that, you know, that they're not being, they're being asked, and they're, they don't feel like that the, a decision by the school or a teacher was not fair, that they have that right to talk, to, to bring that up. So that was the idea of the second, second part of the second bullet.
Okay, thank you. I have Mrs. McLaughlin to be followed by Mrs. Strauss, Ms. Evans, Ms. Eleanor Colfax.
Thank you. I, I first wanted to speak to some of the concerns that have been brought up over the last eight years about what happens if FCPS changes the way it handles first-time marijuana possession and use. This Board did pass about six years ago, change on how we handled possession of marijuana, and we did do an expedited review and consider the return of students to those schools if it was a first-time offense. And I've not heard from our principals that it's made our schools less safe, but more importantly, to the question about data and how do we help the community understand it, Arlington County Public Schools has had their second chance program in place for 12 years. That's, that's the data that we should have been bringing to our community eight years ago. They have 12 years of data to show that it helps. Everyone sitting around this table knows that our country has filled its prisons with people who have drug addiction. And what do we know now? Stop filling prisons and try getting people help for drug addiction, because addiction is a health condition. And for first-time offenders, this is an opportunity for us to help them and their families get these kids back on the right track. And that's how I think we help answer to our families who are concerned about a change. I think also being able to help our families say, we changed our practices six years ago, and what we're hopefully doing is identifying those kids and helping those families realize that they need to get help for their kids. But I'm proud of the fact that this school division has tried to make strides in the second chance mindset. I'm not asking that we wholly adopt what Arlington has, where they include a lot of other drugs. I'm, I'm just saying that let's start with the baby steps, let's look at how we're doing. We separated possession and use of marijuana six years ago. The only goal here is to say, if they've, they're possessing it in school grounds, oftentimes it's because they planned on using it at some point, whether it's in the parking lot, whether in the backfield, so let's just get them the help they need. I think that these, this proposed change is where we should be going, and the language is on page 31, Section B, on how we would handle it, and I do think it's appropriate. And I also want to thank Ms. Johnson for providing the summary, and to my colleagues, I would ask that if you look at the next step document that was provided by staff, if you look at question number 11, which I had asked about what our staff did in meeting with Fairfax County agencies, they met in February, and now they've met most recently Agencies, they met in February, and now they've met most recently June 18th, with a, a real collaborative mindset of, "Let's do this together. Let's, let's definitely, finally, benefit from what Arlington has seen works." And so I'll, I'll need to go back to talk to the other things. But thank you for providing that helpful information.
Okay, thank you. I have Mrs. Strauss and Ms. Evans.
Thank you. Okay. Um, two things. One is, um, how are we going to treat public use of marijuana in the back of a classroom? Is that still, you get another bite at the apple with that?
So at this point, the way it reads right now, um, there is discretion when, so it, it basically says that the student cannot be, um, doing something that is so disruptive to the classroom environment. Uh, and, and that was something that, in talking to the principals, they felt was pretty important because of the issue of, what if somebody's doing it right in the classroom? What if it's a situation where kids had to go to the hospital, et cetera?
Right. Okay, good. Because that's, I hear that both from teachers and other kids. They really don't want to see it publicly used in a classroom. Um, the other question I have is also in first violation of various things, where it's a seven to 14 days off of school activities. Used to be for athletic, if you were on the football team. Um, if you were caught drinking at a party, there were different sorts of rules. Where does that fit with this? Because with this one, you could go to a party, get pretty drunk on Friday night, and you could play football the next Saturday. Right, yeah. So explain to me kind of where we are with that, because the athletics always felt pretty strongly that needed to keep a close tie on that.
So the student, the extracurricular participation policy is still in existence, and the principals could speak to this. They have had a lot of discussion around this, particularly this year. So I'm going to ask Greg, as the president, to weigh in here.
Um, you know, something we discussed was, you know, it was pretty, it was 30 days out before for pretty much anything, vaping, drugs, alcohol. It also included things over the weekend. Um, and some of our discussions around that, that's very difficult for us as a school to try to manage, keep up with, or get information on. So I think this actually provides a much clearer outline of what, what students can and can't participate in. And it's not just about athletes, it's really about all students, which should be whether it's a Friday night football game of students in, or the students in the marching band, or whatever else it may be, or a club or activity after school.
So in other words, the, the rules that used to be in place for athletic teams, it's, it's no longer? In other words, it's going to be seven days?
My understanding would be the same as what's in, everything would follow SRNR.
Okay. So a coach can't set a different, a different requirement and still be able to play?
That's correct.
Let's just, let's just clarify. Could we, Francisco or Teresa, for me, since Ms. Strauss is raising this, the participation policy for folks involved in activities, that's a policy, is that a policy or a regulation? Because-
It is not a policy, and it is not a regulation. It was developed by Fairfax County Public Schools, and it is more a, a set of guidelines and practices.
Right. So-
From a long time ago.
To be honest, Ms. Strauss, this, we want to get through SRNR and build this new framework in place. And I think it's an honest truth that among high school principals, there's real debate about whether we relook at the participation policy as it's currently constructed. We have not removed it at this point, but I think it is something that high school principals, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, have been having extensive debates about. And the framework we're putting in place, the tiering, if you will, seems to fit better with the sense of how we might go about approaching this than the participation policy, which was 30 days, and it had us extending into every weekend activity, where I would come in on Monday as a prin, a high school principal and hear, "So-and-so maybe did this on Saturday, so-and-so." And, and who knew? It, talk about investigations. Monday could be, again, a whole set of investigations that had no nexus to a school activity. So I do think an open discussion moving forward from this SRNR is, what do we want to do with, and it hasn't been a board policy, it hasn't been a board, um, piece, but what do we want to do administratively and working with principals around the future of that participation policy for that group of kids?
Okay. So, well, thank you for the clarification. So there are no VHSL rules that deal with any of this? I mean, years ago, that was always part of the debate, but you could-
Not in, not in, to my, not to my knowledge, and I'll ask the principals over here, but not in my experience, it doesn't come down from VHSL.
Okay. All right. Um, the other, Ms. Corbin Sanders, you were talking about, um, appealing to the superintendent, because there is a, a piece in there where a decision- Right. Right, right. And I was going to say, one of the reasons why that is there, and I, you know, we do whatever we want, is, um, obviously, you can complain to anybody, and the question is to appeal. If you, um, part of the reason that some of that was in there is to regularize an actual process for appeal. But if this is just a complaint, you can complain to anybody. But the question is, going through an appeal, how far up the chain do you go through an appeal, and then what kind of a process? Because if it doesn't go through the hearings office, then appealing directly to the superintendent has no process.
I understand that, Ms. Strauss, but the language clearly states, "The decision of the regional assistant superintendent shall be final."
Right. And that's what I was going to say.
That's the problem.
Yeah, I know. And the reason why that was, that kind of a stopgap was put in years and years ago. It was to clarify an appeal process so that it was fair, other than if you can pick up the phone and call so-and-so, I am going to get this thing overturned. So I don't know what we want to do, but I just wanted to explain if, that, why that was done a long time ago.
So, so the reason, so an appeal process where you're going through the disciplinary process, and you're appealing, you're appealing. We have a, a process for doing that, right? That goes to the hearings office, goes to the school board. Complaining, obviously, anybody can complain whatever. The reason it was written that it stopped with the regional assistant superintendent was that whatever was the complaint had come up through the school to the principal and went to the principal supervisor, who is the regional assistant superintendent. So the reason it had been in there historically was because that person could make a change, if you will, down, that doesn't mean somebody couldn't call you, but they, the regional assistant superintendent would have the power, if you will, to direct somebody, because they're the direct supervisor of that person. That's why it's there. If you want us to take it out, that's a different conversation.
Right. No, I mean, that's, that's, I don't, whatever, whatever anybody wants to do. But it was there for a reason to create a fair, a fair way to accommodate something. So.
The other thing on, if you look on page 11, the right to complain has a footnote. And so when you're talking about what you're, you know, this situation about the regional superintendent shall be final, the footnote speaks to that this does not apply to situations involving violations of conduct that result in suspension from school reassignment or expulsion. So in other words, that, those situations would go through the normal appeal process, which is explained. This Section J is solely for those non-related issues to that. And that's why historically it was there. If it needs to be changed, we certainly, you know, will open to that. We just wanted to clarify that this section was separate and above, and that's why the footnote really speaks to that. And it also talks about if you are trying to appeal long-term suspensions or, or expulsion or school reassignment, what that process is and where that policy is. So it tried to differentiate complaints in general versus complaints that have a real true appeal process. That's historically why it was there. Again, if the board would like to discuss that and have for just normal, general complaints, to have that changed, we'll, we're open to hear that.
So it's just so that there is a fair process, one way or another? Because we didn't use to deal with that. Okay.
Since we haven't standardized our regional assistant superintendent's responsibilities, I'm not comfortable with having language in there that puts a finalization at the RAS level.
Okay. I hate to, to, um, I'm East Team Madam Chair, but ask me for recognition, if you want to speak.
Do I, do I, yeah, yeah. Do I, do I have 35 more seconds?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I would ask that, um, sort of our first chance, second chance with, using drugs at school, that there be a reporting process on recidivism at a quarterly basis, so that we have an, an, an understanding of if we have an issue with some youngsters where we need to-
Okay. Typically, we, we look a year out, and then we look two years out, because, and we're looking for drug reoffenses. So you're saying that you want to know if the kid reoffended within the quarter? I think it's going to be a very-
My concern is, right, yeah, I know. We usually get the reports at a yearly basis, but I'm concerned that, and I guess I would get from the principals. I mean, do we need, do we need to monitor this more often than once a year?
And just as a follow-up to that statement on the decision of the regional assistant superintendent being final, we can just take that sentence out, because it doesn't change the nature of what the rest of that paragraph speaks to in providing the, the process. So I'm hearing a sentiment, and if not, I would love to hear from board members. But it's easy for us to take that out, and that doesn't change the, the basic message of what's there. So we're happy to remove that sentence.
So just a quick response back. How often do you want to dipstick as to what recidivism is looking like?
I mean, I know that we're doing yearly, too. You know, it's hard to say, depending on the number of cases. I mean, to me, the more information's always the better. I don't know if it should be quarterly or semi-annually, but I would welcome the opportunity to be able to see that on an ongoing basis in some way. Um, so I don't know if there's a way to look at it more times than just once.
Right. Right now, the recidivism for a year is 3% with AOD seminar. It's 3%. And then when we look, 4%, and then when we look over two years, it's 7%. Meaning with, the kid didn't have a second offense for two years.
But I'll, I'll ask when I have my, for clarity on that, okay?
So for reporting purposes, Ms. Strauss, I think we can do quarterly reports on terms of what's happening, in terms of violations. But if you're speaking about recidivism, that is an annual-type report that would need to happen.
We already asked for the drug, in the previous next steps, we already asked for the drug reports on a quarterly basis.
Yes. But the question was about recidivism, and so that would not really be a quarterly way to man, to look at that. It would be very difficult. So annually for recidivism. But yes, certainly, we already have the quarterly reports that we're doing. But specifically, I think you're asking about recidivism, if I heard you correctly.
That's what I would be looking for, so.
Dr. Brebray, did you want to say anything? Okay. All right. Uh, I have Ms. Evans to be followed by Mr. Eleanor Korfex and Karen Kiskamara.
Uh, thank you. First of all, I want to thank the superintendent and staff and our principals for all the work that has gone into making some of these recommendations for positive changes. Well, and also for sticking it out with us tonight. We, you know, we ended up being a little later than we had thought we would be. Uh, since we have this on the screen, I'll mention that my colleagues have made some recommendations to me for some modifications. So I will be making that, taking out the word "fully," specifying that we're talking about one, um, one parent preference as opposed to multiple ones. So I will be massaging that language a little bit more before, before I offer it. Um, I wanted to specifically talk about parent notification, which, um, the, the recommend, let's go to slide nine, so we can have the language in front of us. Um, I do think this is a significant improvement in terms of clarifying where we are. Um, I don't know that it is really as, um, signi, it, it, in many ways, simply clarifies what we had intended six years ago when we passed the previous parent notification. But I did want to give our, um, our principals an opportunity to weigh in if they wanted to. So I'll stop now to give, give our principals an opportunity, if they would like to give us their thoughts on that language.
Yeah. Uh, so for me, I feel like, yeah, this is okay language with us, and we do this. And so it's not sort of out of the norm for, at least for me at my school. And so we do phone and text and email and do whatever it takes to contact the parent prior to questioning students.
Okay.
I don't know about you, Greg.
And that-
Yeah.
No, I like the language, too. I think it's fine, just the way that it is, and it looks like it's, you know, the intent's there. Um, I know it says to text, phone, and email. I don't know if the interpretation of that is to do all three. Um, we kind of hope not to do all three at the same time for a parent we're calling about an issue. Some parents, we know it's better to reach them by phone or email, but that the, you know, the intent there is to make that reasonable effort to get ahold of them. It's like I said, my preference is always to have them come in as a part of this process.
Well, that's wonderful to hear, because I think one of the things we all want to do is make sure that our parents are partners in this process and are brought in just as soon as possible. So I appreciate that. I mean, one thought was that, without going into much greater detail in the SRNR, we could have a separate, um, guide to specify exactly what each of these things mean. You know, do we mean phone and text and email? Well, probably, you know, whatever's the most effective in that instance. But that might be for, for an addendum someplace, just to, to specify for administrators. So thank you for, for your support for that. Um, other than that, I'm, uh, if you had any comments, well, actually, I have one more question. Um, previously, we had talked about the THC oil being put into a different category. Um, it appears then it's now being put in the same category with, with marijuana. So I guess I just wanted you to clarify. Have we then made a change since the original? Uh, yes, okay. I see.
Yes, we made that change, because though, when we first talked to the police, they indicated it was a Schedule I drug. Uh, when we then talked to the Commonwealth attorney and to some others, um, what they said was rarely are they charging it as a Schedule I drug for juveniles. Um, again, sort of, it's because of the vaping piece of it, it, you do in fact have kids who, you know, are just one-time vaping THC oil. And so we decided to stay in alignment. Um, as we've been having the conversations about what might it look like as we broaden out to the police and the courts and everyone else, that seemed to be, uh, at least for the moment, a more comfortable place to land, keeping it with marijuana for the moment. And we'll see how things evolve over the year.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that clarification. And, um, I, I also will echo what, what Ms. Heinz said, that, uh, the, that it is important to also keep in mind the safety and security of our schools. And if our, if the approach is to have much more intensive alcohol and drug intervention, I think that's, that's a good direction to be going. And so I, I appreciate that we've, we've now brought forth having additional staff to do that. So I guess my last question with my two seconds is, uh, seven, uh, seven positions, how would that be divided up? And then I'm out of time.
So in looking at, um, and I want to comment about parent notification. We've had some conversation, I think I heard something about a checklist, and we, I think the principals are in agreement, that's a fantastic idea, and sharing that with administrators when it comes to parent notification and, and processes. We've even had some conversation about, based on our information from the consultants, about developing a handbook. That's not a, the hearings office has their own handbook. This would be more of practical practices and adding those flow charts that we want for the actual process, as well as students with disabilities. So I just wanted to share that information. Um, and then the other question. Oh, oh, the seven substance, getting late, I'm sorry. The substance abuse prevention specialists. We would like to provide, our data is showing that all the students that should be going to the AOD seminar are not accessing the AOD seminar. We would like to provide direct support and resources to students in the pyramids. And part of that would be taking our, currently, we have six substance abuse prevention positions. We're still trying to fill the last one, I believe, Stefan, back there. Uh, one more to go. And then we would like to take our AOD teachers, we have five of them, and we would like to place them in, in, in pyramids. The initial seven would be to, we were looking how to phase in, this is a lot of money, and how would we phase in the support to the pyramid? So the seven would go to, for a total of 18, got my math right. And then we would use our data. Stefan's already reached out to our county partners, the epidemiologists at the county level, to help us look at our data to, and emergency room visits, those kinds of things, to see where our high needs. And then we would split some of those less needy schools right now for next year. They would share a substance abuse prevention specialist or an AOD teacher, whichever one is in the building. And then looking at phasing in in the next year, six, so that we would have one per pyramid.
If I could on that, when we talk about access gap, gaps, we've often looked, talked about that under student success. under student success. This is an access gap with student discipline. If kids go to AOD, there's a low recidivism rate. But the reality is, in the county, in our school system, we haven't had a lot of, all those kids go to AOD, and there's been an equity piece to that. Some kids can afford to, their parents will transport them, there's support to do it, others not. So we're going to close that equity gap by bringing those folks in on a pyramid basis and being able to do in-house what we used to say, yep, you can go do that, this is good stuff, but you got to go do it on your own, out of the school. So this is a big equity move that is closing an access gap for discipline, that really should address some of the disproportionality, not just in discipline, but in the treatment and intervention and prevention, and let more kids have access to these interventions. So I think it's going to be a powerful, it's part of our year-end proposal. Of course, the board has to vote and support the year-end, but I think it's one of the steps in the right direction that aligns our work and our interventions with what we're trying to do in this SRNR. Because what we heard from principals a few weeks ago, Scott, we're willing to support this framework, but we need the resources to be able to deliver on the interventions to make sure this can work. We're willing to see that recidivism come down. What we can't have is kids, we need to keep a safe and secure environment in our schools, and we need interventions that work. And if the kids aren't repeating, and you said already, we need to monitor that data, and we'll bring it back to you on a regular basis, then principals can, can be there with us. And I am so proud for, earlier for your comments, but also some years ago, I wasn't here, of principals, as I understand, that were back in a room and standing. They're here at the table, sitting with you, with us. This is a united front to go in a different direction with the SRNR. And we're, we're not all the way there, but I think we've taken big steps in what we presented to the board over the last week or two. And I mean, I know there'll be a few more tweaks here and there, but I think we're headed in the right direction.
Thank you so much for that, Dr. Braybrand.
If I could just ask two, add two things. Those substance abuse prevention specialists would be working with our students who are vaping, and whether that be nicotine, or that be THC oil, or whatever. In addition, in, in planning for the future, we also would be working with all of the court-referred students that are first time, Fairfax County Public School students who are first time referred to the court, and that's part of building out our MOU.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Mr. Darnett Kofax to be followed by Karen Kishkamara and Mr. Wilson.
I just want to thank staff for your quick updates from the last work session. There were lots of things, and, you know, I went to, back to check, and mine are in there, and so many other peoples are in there, and, and now we're, and then the big ones are highlighted. So thank you so much, because we know that was a long work session with many suggestions. So, so thank you. My question was the same as Ms. Evans, what the principals, what you all thought about that language, and you've answered that. So I guess I will then ask you, and, and I too want to make sure, you know, as a parent in, you know, whose children have just, whose daughter just recently graduated, I wanted to make sure we have a safe and secure environment for our, our children, and I know that's your miss, your mission too, as well as making sure we, we take care of those kids who are, you know, need some help. So I guess, since we've asked you specifically about that, was there any, I guess, and you could, you don't have to answer if you don't want to. So, but were there any changes that were made in the last few days that have given you pause, or you'd like to kind of just, you know, say, we like that, but this is what we're concerned about, or, you know, just any other, like Dr. Braybrand said, any other resources that you feel you might need in order to effectively maintain a safe and secure environment while enacting these changes?
Right. Just quickly, I'd just like to say that last week I came across as a little bit of a hard disciplinary and, and not being very caring about students who need help, as you put it. But I want to be clear that we don't see it as an either-or proposition. We see it as both, and we see how we apply discipline as an intervention. And so as I think about keeping a safe and secure environment for students, I'm also concerned about teaching, treating all THC oil the same. The, the law-enforcing folks will tell you that THC oil over a certain concentration is more addictive, and it has a greater impact on kids physically. And so I don't want to parse this too much, but I just couldn't go without saying that, that it's, it's not all the same. This is dangerous stuff. And to try to enforce a policy that's one size fits all, I think doesn't, may not serve us as well as we think.
I would just like to say first, thank you, because I feel like this is really a process where we're working through it together, and I think we all want the same thing for all of our kids, whether it's the students on the side who want a safe and secure environment, or students who made a mistake and need help. Probably the one thing that concerns me around this, and I said it last time, is we're putting additional resources in place, or trying to, around the substance abuse counselors. Of course, in an ideal world, I'd like to say that every single pyramid, or even every single high school, would have one of those that students could access and support. Just as I look at the numbers and increasing, we know the issues around vaping, and the use of THC oil and other things, that we want to make sure the students have access to those resources, that it doesn't have, happen a week later, or two weeks later. To me, if it, if something happens and there's an incident, let's get it right there and then, so they can get the support they need. Or if, even better, if it could be proactive response, where they have opportunities to get those resources even before something happens at the school level. And then lastly, would just say, and I know it came up a little bit, is just around the, obviously, we want as principals for students to participate in that graduation ceremony. And I know we then talked about all those other activities. I think that might be a little bit more of a discussion around, depending on those events, there's certain times where I could see that being a concern for other students and families. And thus, as a community, about keeping the school safe, the students were still allowed, certain students, and we're talking about a very few, obviously, could, would be participating in events at the school level that generally they didn't have access to before. And I'm not talking about just across the board for any incident, but again, we're talking about really serious offenses.
So thank you for asking that question, because I think my biggest thing that I think about when I pause about is my staff perception, right? So as we move towards this, so how do I educate my staff? So we're going to start the first of the year with it. So I, and I just need to do it, but I need to, I, I need to prepare for that, right? Educate my staff, educate my community. So that'll fall on me. My staff trusts me, but at the same time, I think we all are thinking like, so we have to get this message out to them so that they understand. So we've had the opportunity to come here and talk to you twice. They haven't had the opportunity to hear this. So the first time they're going to hear it is at their back-to-school meeting. And so that might be something that, you know, that I think, that I'm thinking about this summer, as I move forward and, you know.
Well, I, I appreciate all of those. And, and, you know, just like the la, just because you're the last one first here, I mean, Dr. Braybrand, I think there can be ways the regional people can help with that. I think that would be, you know, the razzes to, to, to solidify the messaging and ensure that, you know, just like we're trying to, you know, get uniform across the board, the messaging needs to be the same about why we're, we're doing this. You know, we're, we're, we're doing it for the right reasons, we believe, not, you know, to, I think, and I, I think I need further clarification, Mary Ann, on the substance abuse counselors. Now, were these the ones that originally came out from the skip committee, those monies? So it came from there. And just a funny thing about that, if you remember, now, I think we're going to be using them a different way. One of the reasons they were taken out of the schools were the kids were not using them. And I think we're going to be, but maybe that was kind of in a self-reporting way, because that was, that was part of the historical perspective of putting, taking them out, putting the, taking them out, then, you know, and, and getting funding to put them back in. So.
And part of that was that previously, they had been employees of the Community Services Board. And as employees of the Community Services Board, they were under a different set of confidentiality pieces. So as a treatment agency, the Community Services Board was not allowed to share with parents or with anyone else, any information about anybody who was over 14, without the kid's permission. So if a kid came and talked to a counselor and said that I'm really into drugs, the counselor was unable to share that information with the parent and say, you know, we need to work and get your child help. And then the other piece was the connection then to the Community Services Board for services, when the, when the counselor felt that this child needed more than what they were going to get in school, that linkage did not work very well. So what we've worked out this year is that there is, we keep referring to it as a warm handoff, but the Community Services Board, through a Skype almost process, can do the intake with the parent at the school, and can, and, and that person then would be the person who the kid would be working with. So you get just much more support to actually getting them to therapy. So we're, we're watching, right now, we're doing the data that we're getting on the first six, to see if that piece, do we get the kids who we feel like need therapy into therapy, and do they complete whatever sessions CSB is, is assigning them to, or things that are appropriate for them? That data is not in yet. We have had, you know, early success at making the connections. I think an important part that we would hope these people would do, that the other SAPs did not, would be to run these groups, which are an evidence-based eight-week group for kids who use, it's called cannabis youth treatment, but it's, it's marijuana and other substances. And it was developed to be done in schools by, by professionals, but you don't have to be a professional drug counselor to do, to run the program. So we have had the early people and the AOD teachers and some psychologists and social workers trained to do those groups. But our hope would be that when we got to a point where we have one per, per pyramid, that that person could be running groups at the middle school level, the high school level.
Okay. And then I, I would like, because that, the, what Dr. Torrell said was, is also, you know, something that I'm concerned about, the one-size-fits-all approach for the, the THC oil in particular, because we're, we're, you know, we know the potency of that. And like, how can we, can we track? I, I don't know exactly what we can do about that.
What, what we were told was that, like, testing is difficult. And so quantity certainly would be an issue when we're, we're looking at, you know, basically, at this point, it's, you can get it in pods typically. Then the, if a kid is carrying around, I don't know, a jar full or something, that would be obviously more than personal use. So I think we're a little bit in uncharted territory, quite honestly. We're trying to, everybody's trying to figure it out because of the way it's being marketed. At this point, it seemed to be fairly confusing. You're getting into gummies, you're getting into a lot of edible kinds of things too, with THC oil in them. And just in talking to the people at our, at our MOU kind of conversation, it seems that at this point, for first time, for juveniles, they would like to take an approach of, of treatment, or trying to get the kid connected with somebody. But I absolutely agree that this is a very dangerous drug. And we can't be sending some message to the kids that, you know, oh, it's just THC oil, which is what they already think. It's like somehow, a lot of them think it's safer than marijuana. It's, again, it, in the same way that they think vaping is safer than cigarettes. They're, they're just confused. So we're doing a lot of training around it, but it's going to take some time. And as I said, we've got a $2 billion industry working against us and telling everybody how safe it is.
Ms. Darnett Kofax, what I would say is, we're going to monitor that. We had staff debates about one-size-fits-all versus taking it forward. But we did, we worked with the county, we got their play about how they would handle it, and why are we going to do all the work to take that forward when the county is going to say we're going to divert it back? So we're taking a diversion-first approach to first-time THC oil use. We'll monitor the data. Now, if it explodes on us, and I, I, I'm just sharing that if the data is such that we go, oh, my gosh, what we're doing isn't working, we need to relook at our strategies. And what I want to do is, we're not going to wait five years to look. We're going to show you data, and next year, if we think we need to make tweaks to this SRNR in any direction, we'll make them, based on what the data says. But based on our current conversation with the county, we think this is the, the best approach at this, this moment. And we'll monitor and keep, keep communicating with the board.
And just to follow up on that, a lot of the guidance from the group, the MOU group is not necess, perhaps maybe tweaking the SRNR, but really more so what additional resources or training or messaging that we can jointly do if we see a spike in these cases. How do we message better? How do we help parents? Because frankly, many parents don't even understand. As Mary Ann said, the $2 billion industry is coming against us. So that's been a lot more of our conversation, is what will we potentially need to do differently around training and additional resources, maybe not so much around the policy. We'll have to see.
All right. Thank you all.
Okay, thank you. I have Karen Kishkamara to be followed by Mr. Wilson.
First of all, I do thank everyone for your quick responses. I thank you guys for being here, for waiting, for, I don't know who was talking so much, but anyway, it wasn't me, wasn't me. But I'm happy to follow Ms. Darnett Kofax, because many of my comments have to do with two topics. One is consistency, and two is how do we lead into this best from an educational standpoint, right? I don't think, for example, Ms. Epp, that this, you should feel as though this is totally on you, and that you have to educate. But I'm hoping, Dr. Braybrand, that, you know, I don't know if we can pull, how quickly we can pull together a video or something, because the fact of the matter is, there's a lot of misinformation out here about vaping, about THC oil, about what it can, what can happen and what can't happen. I mean, the commercials, I'm, you know, there may, that may have to be part of our legislative, part of what we bring there, but I don't want to use all my time up on that. So just going through some of the languages, I really appreciate the first paragraph with respect to, well, that introduction, with respect to, you know, really tailoring our responses. But I am concerned overall with respect to language that may not be very clear, and how we plan to monitor it. On page 11, I think someone may have talked about this already, all staff report any observed and reported allegations. But anybody can report to the Title One, Title IX Coordinator. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. This, the, the sentence at the bottom of paragraph one seems to say that that should be the principle. And so I'm just, you know, given some of the concerns that I know that we've dealt with as a board, I would not want any of our staff members or family or whomever to feel as though. The footnote? Okay. Is it in the footnote? Okay. All right. The next one.
One of the things about, about a teacher reporting directly to the Title IX Coordinator, which could happen, but you want the principal to do an investigation and to do the follow-up pieces. So like, for example, with, I don't know, abuse reporting, anybody is a mandated reporter. But in the schools, our suggestion is that you go to the administrator, the social worker gets involved, there's a whole, you know, while telling them that that doesn't absolve you of your responsibility, so if somebody is not responsive, you need to go forward. But the concern is just, if, if it went to the Title IX Coordinator, we want to be sure that the investigation gets done, and the teacher's not going to be the one doing the investigation.
I, I understand that, but just as with the abuse I have seen, and actually have been to trainings where, are you, okay, okay. Have actually been to trainings where they're thinking about how many folks within the school system they can sue, right? Because it's not just going to be, in accordance with FCPS policy, all of those mandatory reporters under Virginia's, Virginia statute can be, can hit, be hit. So I won't belabor that point. If you paint, turn to page 25, and it talks about disruptive or inappropriate behavior, this is some of the language that I think tends to be vague enough that it leads to disproportionality. So I'm just wondering, to what extent we're watching that, how we plan to monitor that. I took a quick look in the glossary, there was no definition. I don't know how that is helpful, and whether our razzes or executive principals or whomever will help us to kind of rein in on some of that.
Again, the charts that were put into place in the front of the SRNR don't list something as a disruptive behavior or, or whatever. That's just a title to group these kinds of behaviors together. But the charts, as you see, describe specific behaviors. And over time, not this year, but the next year, the the state reporting will align with those charts as opposed to reporting something as disruptive or disorderly or insubordination. Those won't be the names used.
I understand that. But having handled a few cases, we see that language all the time.
And we're unquestionably disproportionate in that area. That was the...
Right. What I'm saying is, we see that language as a reason for a particular discipline. And so I'm just wondering how, I'm, I'm, I would like for us to put our thinking caps on. It may not be something that we can correct by the time we vote on this. But it is such vague language that I think it's one of the areas where perhaps we can try to find some healthy boundaries so that it doesn't become that whole catch-all.
We certainly can take a look at that and also know that the RAS and the EPs are going to be monitoring all of the different codes and getting reports on a regular basis, which I think will help the issue as well.
And having the consistency of the codes now that more define what the behaviors are will allow us to run those types of reports to know that it's School A versus B versus C, there's consistency around how they record that. And then the only other piece I would say is, this is also part of our equity profile where we are looking at it at the division level and school level to understand where we are seeing that disproportionality. And then the, not the only thing, then the last thing I would say, this is what we talked about with the discipline study and my recommendation that we really think about our goal to caring culture report. Then we provide a metric around this. That is something that we have baseline and then goals for reducing this. Because this is one that the consultants told us was one that is very subjective and where we see a larger amount of disproportionality. So I think that's yet another way, on top of the RAS looking at it regularly, annually, how are we looking at it through the strategic plan metrics? How are we reporting to the equity profile? And then how are we consistently making sure that schools are inputting those offenses so we have something to look at that's comparable?
I know I'm preaching to the choir, but this is sort of the school equivalent of disorderly conduct. And when we look at those numbers in the county... Right, I'm sorry? Oh, okay. All right. So I'll stop here with, on page 46, it talks about an alternative, maybe, and all, the paragraph nine, as an alternative, the student may continue to receive out-of-school supports assigned by the Office of Intervention. I don't see any time periods there or any guidelines. Again, that's just something I'd like for us to think about. Because I know in our discipline cases, we have sometimes been very concerned about how long a child has been out of the classroom, how long they have been in in-school suspension, and things of that nature.
So we're also concerned about the time. And so, but as relates to page 46, under number nine, this is during the appeal process. So what really this, your question, in essence, I think, really addresses, how do we make sure that the appeal process is not as prolonged as it has been? So we do anticipate and see, we've looked at some of the data with some of these changes to the SRNR. There will be less hearings and things going to the hearing office around first-time use, around students with MDR found that are causal with no victim. So potentially, we will see that there will be less time out. But this particular section, as it relates to a timeline was your question, that would be whenever, however long the student is in the appeal process. So that's why it doesn't have more definitive time. It's however long that is. Our charge, though, and our goal is to reduce that time while they're on the appeal process to not have it be as prolonged.
So I have a Mr. Wilson. Someone who have to monitor his time.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Moon. It will be monitored. So my question, I actually have two questions. The first really is a broad question. It actually came in through an email to the board from a citizen. And that is, is it possible to create, you know, sort of a one-page or two-page, you know, bright line, you shall not, you know, for the students? So that they can really understand that, the SRNR?
So we have a, what we call a quick guide for students. We have one for high school, second and middle school, and a different one for elementary that does that exactly. It's, it's online. It goes into their binder. It's three, it's got a three-hole punch in it, and it's a two-page thing.
Okay, that's perfect. Because, you know, the SRNR is a pretty long document, is over 50 pages now. So, and very detailed in a lot of ways. And that leads to the second question. So we've made, I think, positive changes in terms of this first-time offense paragraphs, particularly with regards to marijuana. But I am, I'm a little concerned because throughout Chapter 2, Section A, there's multiple references about reporting to police or authorities in the, if it's under law requirement in Virginia. And then in Section B, that actually is titled a section that deals with, you know, reporting police, reporting to police and parent and victims and certain code violations. In the case of the first-time offense, what, is that an illegal? Is that, is that an illegal drug use? And does that require reporting? And how does that mesh with our new proposal?
So our goal, of course, is working with, we've been meeting with the police and the courts. And the goal is to divert all first-time offenses that are misdemeanors. So you want to add to that?
Well, just, it would have to be reported to the police. But in the same way that, that we do with, things that we do with through RJ, the report is taken, but there's no complaint filed with intake. And therefore, it doesn't go to a petition, doesn't go to the court. So the MOU will stipulate how that will work so that we know for sure that it's the first time. But basically, that way, the kid doesn't get a quote record, even at intake, is how we've done the RJ one.
That's awesome. I'm really glad to hear that, that you've kind of thought forward on that and we're looking out for that. Okay. And now I'm looking at the section where we deal with that first-time offender rules that we're creating. And in that section, this is page 30 of the copy we have that shows the insertions and highlighted text. So in paragraph E, the marijuana, imitation marijuana controlled substances, that describes all illegal drugs. And then down in 1A, it talks about arriving at school property under the influence of ecstasy and cocaine and drugs that don't fit into this category of first-time offenders. And I wonder whether or not there's going to be some confusion because we're, we obviously treat cocaine use and bringing cocaine and ecstasy to school differently. But if the kid ingests it at the bus stop or something and then shows up under the influence, we're treating it differently. And I just, I just point that out because, again, I think this is, we're kind of entering into new territory, and I want to make sure we're doing it consistent and...
So we have always treated under the influence differently. And in part, we don't know what the kid took. So when the, when the kid is at school and they are acting in a way, and the principals can speak to this, we often like, so we're not making a differentiation between one kind of drug and another kind of drug because we don't have a way to know what they took necessarily. Once upon a time, when everything was alcohol, we'd do a breathalyzer and we'd say, oh, look, grit. But now, it can be the kid's, somebody else's Adderall, right? Like, it can be a lot of different things. The principals each have stories of having some pretty serious situations. Again, ambulances are called, et cetera. But we have treated that historically as a flag, a need to get the kid. We've always sort of done, under the influence, as this is a sign, people, we need to get this kid some help. The differentiation then, historically, has been whether the kid actually brought the drugs on school campus or used them while on campus.
Very quick follow-up. So if a student shows up intoxicated multiple times, would they still fall under this two-day suspension rules? Just, just...
Right. It does say, if you, if you look at E1 as you're going down, it does say that it could go, you've got a two-day, it says, however, if it's multiple, I mean, if it creates a substantial disruption to school, it could go on. And again, I believe a kid who is coming and under the influence, as the principal said, if they have to send a KIP message home because something was disruptive, because this kid was under the influence of something, then that is something they would take forward to the hearings office.
I think it would be helpful, though, to just clarify, because a student might not...
For second offenses?
They might not be disruptive, but they might be under the influence. And so, you know, because we want to pick up those kids and make sure they're getting the help they need. And so if we're seeing multiple times they're coming, I think, I mean, we ought to just call that out, I think.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I'm the last one on this list, and there will be the go-bags. Just quickly, one comment on page 11. I think this is what Chairman Corbin-Sandler has brought up, to the decision of the regional superintendent being final. Anyone listening? There was page 11, page 11, J2. My recollection is, Mrs. Rouse, when we put this one in, there could be a, all sorts of different kinds of complaints, you know, including homework or grading on certain things. And we, school board didn't want those complaints come to the school board. Because otherwise, that would be inundate, it could be inundated with all sorts of different complaints. And school board would have to use their closed-meeting time to discuss every one of them. They want to, so I think the school board wanted to make sure that everybody understood that it was regional assistant superintendents has the final authority and final decision-making on those complaints coming in. So that is my recollection. So that is that. And my concern about students being out of classroom, out of classroom, so not getting in-class instruction while the case is pending, still remains. You see, two weeks before a case gets to the hearings office, and then hearings office have another 14 days to write up their decision letters to send out. And then students have, you know, if they want to appeal to the board, who knows how many more weeks that's going to take? All this time, student could be either out of school suspension or in school suspension, not in, actually in the classroom with a regular classroom teacher. Because I think we all agree that there is nothing that is compared to actually sitting in the classroom, having an instruction directly, having interaction hearing from classroom teachers. The last thing I want to do as a board member, as I said before, that every disciplinary infraction deserves some sort of consequences. But until a final decision is made, whether this is on the principal level or the hearings officer's level or a school board level, unless student poses danger to himself or others in the classroom, we need to keep the kids in the classroom. And final decision is made, if the decision is to suspend the kids for 10 days, 20 days, 30 days, student will serve the consequences. And I don't, that's not enough for me. I don't have a particular language to suggest that yet. Since I don't see the front step, I guess I'm going to have to correct one. That's my comment, the only comment. Any feedback?
I'll make a comment and see what else the folks want to say. From my heart, this is what I'd say to you. We've made more changes in this SRNR than have been made in years. That's my belief. You know, you can go back and check every SRNR and how many changes have been made. Something that was said by principals at the last meeting, and Maria today talking about, I got to go back and work. And we're going to work very closely with principals to implement this with fidelity. I think we've got to be very careful about, we know who appeals and we know who does not appeal in our community. I'm just being honest. And there are going to be a lot of serious incidences. We're going to then spend time arguing about what's the danger. But serious situations where that kid will be back in the next day in class. And we're not going to be able to get into the details with the teacher or the other classmates. And that's my concern. I understand, Mr. Moon, your point. Some of our kids out because of appeal have been out way too long. And maybe we have to figure out how to cap the total amount of time out. Even though, like Francisco said, I think some of the changes to this RNR are going to let our hearings office speed up the process, and it's been overburdened. But I am worried about putting someone back in, that the appeal puts them right back in the classroom. That's just my honest, I'd rather keep working and looking into that issue and seeing if it doesn't improve, then be willing to consider that in a future SRNR change, personally.
Since I have 10 seconds, since I'm the meeting manager, I'm going to abuse my prerogative here. You know, school board at the end may disagree with, may disagree with the decisions made by hearings officers. Principals may overturn the whole thing. Meanwhile, it's been six weeks, two months, kids has been out of school. That's a two-month loss forever for that kid, if somebody made a mistake. And let's say, let's give you another example, theft case. Theft case, that does not really pose a danger to himself or others in the classroom. Something got stolen from gymnasium. Why should that kid have to sit out of classroom for two months? Right away, until the case goes through the whole process. So again, you know, staff may disagree with me. Sounds as if they're going to disagree with me. And I may have to crap something up and see whether I can get six other board members to agree with me. If I don't have six others agree with me, then I'm not going to, I may not propose it. Okay, with that, I've got to go back. I do have everybody on my list to go back. It's at 10 o'clock. Usually, our next steps will take, hold on a second. Next steps generally take at least 15, 20 minutes. With that, with that in mind, I'm going to allow, I'm going to allow, let's see whether we can do in 15, no more than 20 minutes. So as I call your name, you know, if you're not interested in go back, just let me know. You don't have to speak. And I'm going to go one at a time. And hopefully, we can limit each board member with 10 minutes on the go-back. I have a Ms. Heinz.
Thank you. So just had a couple more questions about how we're keeping track of data on the, basically on the second chance and the AOD. You know, we all want the Holy Grail, right? Where we do what's best for the individual child and we keep a safe environment for everybody. But we have to be hard-headed about data, if we're serious about that. And so a couple questions. When we take the AOD data, do we also take sort of control data? That is, kids who have been caught and did not do the AOD as a comparison? That's one question. Secondly, I have looked through the stuff I've gotten on the APS program, and I have not seen, maybe I missed it, the data, which shows whether or not it's effective in terms of recidivism. Did I miss it? If I did, let me know where I've missed it. Because I do see information, but I don't see data yet.
You mean Arlington?
Arlington, sorry. Yes, Arlington.
They don't publish it, but they've shared us that information.
Okay, well, yeah, thank you. And then my third question is, I understand, second chance is a way to divert, right? But we still do, even if we do that, we have kids who are addicted. So I don't think it's really an addiction service, right? So do we have a cessation program? Or does CSB have one that we can actually refer kids to? Because I think we may be conflating second chance and actual addiction here. Thank you.
So in terms of the cessation, for tobacco and vaping, there are none currently in Northern Virginia. We have looked everywhere. The state is working on something that's virtual, but it's not quite available yet. That's for adolescents. For kids with addiction problems, as I said, the, part of the process of the AOD intervention is to do a screener. And the screener would help you see kids with elevated risk for addiction because of the degree to which they're using, the length of time... because of the degree to which they're using, the length of time, et cetera. And those are kids that we're trying to connect to CSB, and CSB does have treatment for that.
Stefan's gone, so we're not sure if there's a control group. I think we would really need to look carefully at that, at that data and start collecting it. I think we could pull it, it would be challenging. I think our greatest concern, and some of what the principals have spoken to about resources, would be, again, the number of students that should be going to AOD are not going to AOD, so less than 50 percent. And that's pretty significant, in my opinion.
Right, which would be the control group, then, right? So.
Right, so currently, we don't have that data. We certainly would take some time, we can process it.
Okay, thank you. I have Corbin Sanders next.
I'm sorry, the Arlington data? Oh, can, can-
They do not publish that, so we didn't publish it, because we don't have it, but that's what they've shared with us, and Marian wants to add to that, but they don't have a report that they actually publish.
And if you already shared it with the board and I wasn't here-
What they said was that they have a 10 percent recidivism rate.
Okay, thank you.
So I have Corbin Sanders next.
On the Acceptable Use Document, the very last bullet says that FCPS reserves the right to monitor and investigate all devices and activities on the FCPS network. The device may also be confiscated by school officials in accordance with the SRNR. And then you look at the Regulation 6410, and it doesn't actually talk about the process of addressing, if a device is taken away, what is, what is the school system do? What are the, what's the process for getting it back? Is it parents asking for it back? Is it, you know, so there should be a follow-on, which is, what's the appeal process to get devices back?
I'll be sending you the tech bulletin that talks about our process as a follow-up to the closed session. Now, we may need to add some to that, but I can at least get, I will be sharing with you in the next couple of days, that'll be coming, an email will be coming from John Foster with that information.
No, I understand.
About, yeah, and we may need to add to that, but I can tell you at least what the process is today, including checklists and those kinds of things.
I just think that, you know, it's kind of like dotting your i's and crossing your t's, and our regulation should clarify, you know, we talk about appeals processes for everything else, that we might want to put something in our formal reg, and we don't have to address it tonight, but we should just have that as a, in the back of our minds.
Yeah, and sometimes these are not within FCPS purview. For example, sometimes they may be in, they may be with the police, and so we have no, they can appeal to us, but we no longer have that device. So some of these things are not something that we have control over.
No, I appreciate that, and I understand it, but the last bullet does say that it can be confiscated.
Yes.
And so we just need to dot our i's and cross our t's about what the next step is.
Thank you. On my list is Ms. Perchek. I have Ms. Schultz next.
I'm up? Okay. Hold on. I'm, I'm saying this because I'm sending this to staff right now. So I had had some motions which had not been addressed yet, but I do want to address on page, on slide four. I am surprised none of my colleagues on a go-back that I'm having to pick this up, that nobody else addresses. I do not believe, I don't know what my colleagues feel like, I do not believe that this definition of substantial disruption, any event that impacts students, parents, staff of the community, or interferes with the normal course, I don't think that that- I, I don't even think, no, I don't even think a negative impact. Anything could be a negative impact. I mean, that is not a substantial disruption. We, we have had schools, you know, that have emptied out, you know, with helicopter activity, and that's a substantial disruption. A student being removed, you know, by EMS, that's a substantial disruption, you know. You know, a negative impact, it could affect like the Kiss and Ride line. That's a negative impact, that is not a substantial disruption. So I'm concerned that, you know, we, often in closed session, encounter a lot of hyperbole, and to be perfectly honest with our principals, it is one of the things behind closed session that you don't ever see, that causes a great amount of ire, in, not only me, but in my colleagues, is that when there is unnecessary hyperbolic language and a student discipline report, it's almost as if it creates an equal and opposite effect. And it's like, we're more likely to go, you know what, they threw everything in the kitchen sink in here. And so, a substantial disruption really does need to be a substantial disruption. I don't know how that can get addressed, I'm not intending to address it at the, at the table. But I did want to just potentially highlight just a couple of the things that I just sent, that I did not get, that I did not see, and I'm just going to list them. I did not see, if a student elects to remain silent, or not to provide a written statement, the student shall not be deemed to be uncooperative. That's one. There's a school environment versus a long, unnecessary, I think, overarching definition that anyone can see. The question of whether or not something is a, we said before, I forget what kind of danger, but I think we all discussed that maybe imminent danger is maybe most appropriate. I did include a definition of parental notification, that it be by, you all said you do, you do it already, but email, text, or calling, but it should be in accordance with the official information that's on file on the student's emergency contact, and then that way, you all can document. So there's accountability on both sides. There is something about having to do with if the law, if the police are going to be notified. And then, I didn't see anything, while I got my age definition, I was happy to see that. I didn't see anything about the intellectual and emotional disability, if you want to-
It's there.
You did, you did get it in there, I missed it. And then there are two MDR issues that somebody can comment after the fact, I've sent those to staff in writing.
One is there.
If you would, could you comment on the intellectual and emotional disability change? Because I must have missed it.
It's right there on, on 11, and also, one of the MDRs that you sent is also on the bottom of 11.
Okay, well, then you can ignore that one in my writing, because that's exactly what I wanted.
If I can, I just want to say, we've taken a lot of board comments and tried to incorporate them. Does that mean we did every single one? Honestly, there were a few where we said, you know what, it was still staff's judgment that we didn't need to make the changes. But we really have tried to take a lot of what you all have said around the table, and almost like the budget process, see pieces of, of the meaningful work that the board wants to do around this issue in partnership with us. So, I'm glad, I know you didn't get everything in there, Ms. Schultz, but we did try to put in as many things as we, as we, because we went back and we recreated similar debates that you all have, and go, you know, what can we live with? What can we do well and do it with fidelity?
Well, I, I appreciate that, and I do, and I did see the progress in this, this process worked, and I still think there's a little bit of room for give and take. So if there, if, if there's additional things that come away from this table, either here or by email, that you and your staff would like to kind of, you know, mull over, if you can add some additional things, it will save us time at the table when we go to vote, because we will have fewer amendments, if I may offer that carrot.
And the only one you mentioned that was really substantive that is not here, you're correct, is the witness piece. That was a discussion that still needs to be had with legal, based on their advice, and so we can take that back.
I didn't feel like, I didn't feel like you guys were there yet, so I'm not asking for it yet.
Okay.
And I'm willing to continue to work with you on that one.
But these, we did put in.
And I do want to share one comment that I emailed you back about the emergency care card, because I sat with Mary Beth, and we did look up the information, that the emergency care card contacts, that information is really in regards to who can pick a child up from school in an emergency. That does not allow that person necessarily to have access to confidential FERPA, FERPA bull information.
I actually responded to your email.
Okay, thank you.
I said, in my, I say specifically, parents. Parents, contact the parents, because what I want, what I think the board is looking for is, we want a defined process, that everybody knows, when you fill out that information on that emergency care card, that's defined in the student rights and responsibility, those are the numbers, so you can't be stuck for not trying to reach them. You've been asked to provide your contact information as a parent, that's who they're going to try to, if something should happen, that's how they're going to contact you, and if you don't do it, if we, because it says, please document your efforts, if you haven't done it in accordance with what's, it gives everybody coverage, I think. So, but I did say, I didn't mean the other people, and I did write specifically, parents.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and I think that would be excellent information to put in our checklist and our flowchart.
Okay, thank you. I had Mrs. McNacklin.
First of all, I want to make sure I get a chance to express my appreciation to principal hood. Even though you're not in my district, I have had parents and PTAs coming to me from the Fairfax County Council, PTAs, expressing their appreciation for your willingness to really publicly engage your community on the issue of vaping. When we've had, just from last year, 69 cases to explosion of almost 700 or more cases in this academic year, a tenfold increase. It's very real, and as Dr. Braybrand said, it's, it's, it's an explosion. And so, I think, Dr. Braybrand, that while we can sort out the, the great changes that staff has put through in the SRNR, I do look forward to more board engagement with you on this, as we prepare for the next school year, on how we, as 12 elected members of a million-person county, can help with the school division, in raising awareness and getting information, partnering with our principals, having our regional superintendents help you. And so Greg, thank you for that. I also wanted to just share, appreciate what the principals were saying, you know, look, there's some changes in here, and we need to be able to communicate this out to the community and our staff. And so I wanted to share with you that you might have heard, we were so fortunate to have incredible consultants present the same day that you all were here. And that is what we need, Dr. Braybrand's team at the leadership team level, and with John Torrey, to help prepare information messaging, as Ms. Kofak said, for you. That speaks to the heart of why FCPS continues to move in this direction toward restorative justice. It's not that we're going soft, it's not that we don't know what we're doing, it's everything that we have come to see is proven through research to be more effective in addressing student behaviors, including addictive behaviors. So I, I think we owe that to all of you, and I hope you know that it's my goal that you get that support and messaging, so you don't feel alone. And then the other thing I wanted to just talk about is, Ms. Schultz, the number page, the slide four you talked about, where the definition for substantial disruption, because of the late hour, we're not going to be able to solve this one tonight, but I absolutely circled it and said, you know, it impacts students, parents, staff, and community? How many? Is it just take one person to say that was a substantial disruption for me, and you need to, you know, refer that kid to the superintendent, they shouldn't qualify for? So I just think that that's one that I'll offline, just try and maybe talk to staff to understand a little bit more, because, you know, I, I look at our principals as having that leadership accountability, and I believe you all have the capacity to be able to define what a substantial disruption is. And with the regional superintendent, and with our superintendent, they can work with you in saying, you called that substantial? Uh, maybe we have a conversation, or, thank you, we got your back, that was substantial. So I think there's ways to get around that, but Dr. Braybrand, that definition on page 58, I think if you put that in front of Fairfax County citizens, they're going to go, that's how Fairfax County Public Schools defines a substantial disruption. So I, I think we need a little more work on it, and I'm happy to provide some suggestions, and to my colleagues, it might be just an amendment.
Okay, thank you. I have Ms. Strauss, if you want to, if not, I can go to the next one.
No, that's fine, I'm just listening.
Okay, Ms. Evans. Mr. Kofak. Karen Kishkamara. Mr. Wilson.
Yeah, I just have one, one quick question on the acceptable use policy for network access. Can you just explain, I think that one concern that's raised to me by parents is, how do I know my child isn't accessing inappropriate materials on the, their device, or on the laptop that's provided? How do we, how do we control that?
So we have internet content filtering, we've actually recently, this past year, we have a new vendor that's even better than the old vendor, and it, we have content filtering, not only when they're in the building, but on all the FCPS take-home devices now also have content filtering. So, nothing is 100 percent, that's why we also educate them, if they see something that's not appropriate, to notify their teacher, but it's pretty, it's pretty good. And you saw the recent thing that we talked about YouTube, so the YouTube, we've, the new tool does a better job than even the current YouTube self-protection does, and so that's why we've added some of those features that just are part of the, so the same content categories now apply to even some of those tools that they didn't used to be able to apply to.
So my recent high school graduate commented that students were watching Game of Thrones in class, is that going to be possible or not?
So, again, we've blocked, this is a, this is a daily thing. So like, we recently, this year, we blocked Netflix, for example, that's no longer available on any of our sites, that also upset, yes, that was another good suggestion. So we periodically continually update this, we add, we added Hulu, for example, we've added some things that we continue to add. It's a, it's a constant process. So some of those things may or may not be filtered by category, because we filter by category, for example, harmful, you know, drug and alcohol, you know, types of categories, but also sometimes these things are for entertainment, and those might not necessarily be blocked from our categories, but we want to add that block, such as Netflix, as an example. So, it's a continual process, if you have, if you see things that you want to have added, feel free to let us know.
Okay, I'm not sure I got the answer on Game of Thrones.
But we do have a very specific process, and we have a whole webpage that documents our process of, of content filtering.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much. With that, could we see the next steps? Yes.
Got it.
It's all Corbin Sanders? Okay, could you check the language?
Okay, move item K, and if you want to, the nondiscrimination language, from page 11 to page 1 in the introduction. Then in the second one, it's remove the last sentence, the decision of the Regional Assistant Superintendent shall be final. The third one is including a reference to the Ombudsman on page 12, when we're talking about, about, let me pull it up, hold on. I did mention it.
Yeah, we got that, yeah.
Okay, and that's-
Title IX.
Title IX piece. Then we also have on, referenced on page 37, it's about the SRO, so we should tie the, tie it back to the SRO MOU, in case anybody wants to look at it. And then page 58, I think we now have three people who have added on, or two additional people that are concerned about the definition on substantial disruption. I had thought that at a minimum, it needs to say negative impact, because as it says now, it's any impact. And I don't know if you can find a substitute for, a synonym for substantial, you could put that in advance of negative. And then the last one is regarding a reference to the Regulation 6410, because the acceptable use piece at the end is actually, is part of the parents section, and we want to be able to cross-reference it to the policy of-
The one that I had asked, and I, it was not in this room, it was in a different room, was an explanation about the fact that Miranda rights don't apply, and I don't know what can be placed into the SRNR. And I don't know what can be placed into the SRNR, but I think it, I think it's important for us to have an explanation that students are not entitled to Miranda rights.
Okay, so, okay, let's do this. We have a 1 through 6 up there, and it sounds as if, for Ms. Corbin Sanders, that's your language, that's.
That's my language, people can modify. May I add one additional, which is, this is, it's a 60-page document, almost. Do we need a table of contents?
Okay.
Does it? Okay.
There should be a table of contents.
Okay, so number seven is, create, add a table of content, contents. Okay, so.
There is.
Okay, there it is, there it is, okay.
Okay, I guess it's.
Okay, so anything else to add? And then, and then we'll see whether we, whether there's a consensus with this. Anything else to add? If not, if not, I am not, I am not going to be supporting removing decision of the regional superintendent shall be final, because there was a good reason to put that in, because I don't want people to think that they can start appealing to the full board on all different, any and all different complaints.
Can we see a show of hands of who can support removing the penultimate statement of the regional assistant superintendent? It says all decisions, yeah.
It's, if somebody makes a complaint and.
But that's everything.
It's, it's all complaints. It's basically saying that if families make a complaint to the principal, principal makes a decision they don't agree with, they appeal it up to the regional superintendent, is that final? Or is that then when they end up bringing it to the school board and the superintendent? And it's not homework and grades. It has to do things like, are you going to, you know, hold a kid back or promote a kid? I mean, are you going to let them have a pupil placement somewhere? I mean, there's big decisions.
That's not in the, that's not an SRNR issue.
The right to complain, does, it says in the footnote that when you are doing discipline, it is an appeal. Complaint is something else. So this is complaining about.
Anything.
Things like Megan was.
Yeah, yeah. This is rights and responsibilities. This isn't all about discipline, student rights.
So let's, let's do this. And anybody else has any concern on any of the items, and then we can vote a number to separately.
These not amendments? I mean, I don't know why we're asked to vote on these right now.
Because, because.
Unless they're minor language changes.
Okay, because as, as we have always done, next step, we have honor board members, board members making a request up there, and if we don't want it, we don't have to support that.
I'm just suggesting, this may not be in the spirit of next steps. It's more like amendments.
This would be like voting on changing the proposed omnibus budget right now. This is changing the omnibus SRNR.
So with that, Ms. Corbin Sanders, would they be okay for us to ask you to propose an amendment rather than doing this?
Well, I think if we look at, at some of these, I would like to know from staff if they have any heartburn about moving, because this has been a fluid process, but, you know.
Thank you, principals.
Putting the non-discrimination policy right up front in the intro, is that a problem with anybody?
No. Numbers 1, 3, 4, and 6 are not substantive changes, it's more putting it in. Number 2 does have some discussion, as you're describing, as well as number 5, which was already referenced by a couple of different board members.
So, so could they.
1, 3, 4, and 6 are not major things for us to.
1, 3, 4.
And 6.
6, okay.
Those are just moving things and making it clear. That doesn't change anything about the SRNR in any way. Numbers 2 and number 5 do. Well, now it's changed the number, but initially.
Okay, so, that's okay, that's okay.
1 through 4 are fine.
So, okay.
It's 10:30.
So 1 through 4 now are the ones that are okay.
Ms. Corbin Sanders, on number 6, I fully expect board members come with their amendments?
I will be happy to bring an amendment on number 5.
And number 6.
And then on number 6, all I was trying to do is clarify that it's not all impacts, it's negative impacts, just because it needed some clarity.
And if I could make a comment here, last week I mentioned, I think it would be really good to engage the principals in this conversation. Greg Hood actually sent us some good examples, and I think there needs to be some further conversation with principals about what that looks like. So we support defining and narrowing this down for principals to help them. And Mary Ann had a great idea about language with, maybe with the RAS, similar to graduation. So could we talk through this a little more?
So, so, so staff is going to come back with a maybe, maybe a different language?
Yeah, right.
That's perfect.
And, yeah, because I think the biggest issue is, I don't think we're staffed at the deputy superintendent's office to handle a formal appeal process for complaints. That's what I'm most concerned about.
Yeah, we need to protect.
We have one Francis, and we have a secretary. And, you know, we've, we've built out the RAS to put two EPs in each region. We're more in a position to do the appropriate complaint, appeal process there.
Okay, so if Ms. Corbin Sanders wants to propose an amendment, you can, you can do it. Okay, so with that, could you, could you support 1 through 4?
Well, can I get my question answered about whether or not, because we couldn't discuss it here at the table, but just the, the high-level discussion about a statement that Miranda rights are not something that a student is subject to in accordance with the SRNR? I think there needs to be some kind of statement. I don't know what that statement is, but I'm asking that staff work with, maybe John Foster?
I'll be, I'll be glad to reflect on that, right? Versus committing to putting the language in. How about that? And then you could always do an amendment if.
Okay, so, Dr. Brabran, first of all, could we accept 1 through 4? Is there any objection? None? And then I'm going to make, I'm going to ask one question and make one request to board members. Dr. Brabran, how quickly can staff come back with your work, so that we can give board members enough time to craft their own amendments, if they don't see anything that they want you to see?
Thursday? I think it's a week.
Yeah, you mean a week, next, next Thursday, next Wednesday, really.
Next Wednesday is when it must be posted for the public meeting, which is July 11th. So it will definitely be posted next Wednesday, which is July 3rd.
That does not give board members enough time to craft their own amendments.
July 3rd, July 11th will be fine.
Okay, you know, if, if, okay, if they do by July 3rd, yes, ma'am.
So I just, I wanted to also capture up there that Dr. Brabran was going to give us further recommendations on the parent notification piece.
Yes, he's going to come up with all the, all the languages.
But I just think we should capture it there.
Right, right. Add that under 5.
Okay, so if a superintendent is going to come back with the modified languages by next Wednesday, July 3rd, could I request all board members come up with their amendments, if any, by following Monday? Following Monday? So that rest of us could have a time to reflect upon it, and then, and then public to provide us input. So for you, it's a July 3rd, for the rest of us, following Monday. Okay, thank you so much with it. Yes, work session is adjourned.